Good evening and welcome to the Town of Riverhead Planning Board Meeting. Today is Thursday, April 6, 2023. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming this evening. We do have a public hearing, which we have great attendance for this evening. A lot of people that probably would like to come up to speak. So in order to keep things moving at a good rate of progression, I would like to limit the comments to three minutes, please. With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. The time right now is 6:04.
Matt Charter is planning for the town of Southampton. We do have a public hearing tonight. We have the affidavit of posting and mailing for the Riverhead Cider House patio and tasting room expansions. This proposes to legalize a 1,294-square-foot expansion of an existing 3,186-square-foot outdoor patio area for a total outdoor patio area of 4,480 square feet, as well as a conversion of a portion of the wine storage area into an additional tasting room with a total square footage of 5,150 square feet and to construct 36 additional parking spaces within a 311,396-square-foot parcel currently improved with a 108,178-square-foot single-story building containing the Riverhead Cider Center, cider processing and bottling areas, as well as various agricultural storage uses with parking and related site improvements. This is located within the APZ, situated at 2711 Sound Avenue, more particularly identified as Sub County Tax Act number 600-41-2-3.1. Just to give everybody a summary of what's going on, we first got this application in back in December. The applicant originally came in to legalize a portion of their patio that they had expanded without approvals. Upon a site inspection by town staff, we did note that they had expanded their tasting room area, so that was added to this application, as was the parking, to show that essentially it can be done on the plan. They have been in justice court. They were served with several tickets from the Fire Marshal's Office related to the improvement, essentially converting the space without building permits, electrical permits, Fire Marshal approval, have paid a $5,000 fine, and they're working through to seek approval of these expansions. And I'll turn it over to the applicant for a little bit more.
Thank you, Matt. I forgot to mention that we do have Zoom available, and our other board member, Joe Baer, is unable to attend this evening, but he is on Zoom with us this evening.
Good evening. Fred Joes, Louis Joes Avalon Abilis, I have the privilege of representing John and Janine King, owners of the Cider House. They're also my closest friends. Speak into the mic. Is that better? Okay. This is essentially an application to legalize the extension of the patio. Frankly, I can't find anything in the town code that requires an application or a permit to put in pavers that are a grade level. Be that as it may, it was done. This was an area that was a grassy area that became muddy whenever it would rain, and to accommodate the patrons there, patio was put in. It kept the area dry. There was no extension of any outside use. The same tables and chairs that were there before are there after, so it didn't require any occupancy application as far as that's concerned. It didn't increase the occupancy of the facility with respect to the 5,000-square-foot change from the warehouse space to an additional tasting room. That was done at the beginning of COVID, and as you can recall, the government imposed requirements on capacity and distancing. So for the safety of the patrons of the Cider House, that space, you can laugh all you want, but, you know, it was done for that purpose at that time, to keep a business going. As we all know, most restaurants were immediately granted the opportunity to do outside dining, put up tents, put up sidewalks, do whatever they had to do to keep their businesses afloat. Mr. King undertook to modify that warehouse storage room, which is less than 5% of the total capacity of the building itself. So that's the application that we have before us. As far as the parking spaces go, we've never had an issue with parking. They are being added because we were told that they would have to be added, not because we felt that we needed to add them, but they will be done. I don't know if they're done already, but they will be done. I reserve my right to get up and rebut anything that is said from the people that are here this evening.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will take members from the public, if you would like to come up again. Let's keep it brief, 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 three minutes or less would even be better.
I'll try.
Thank you.
Claudia Bianco, Bating Hollow. Since the very beginning of his business in 2015, Mr. King has violated the trust of this board, the town, and his neighbors repeatedly by ignoring the covenants of his signed agreement. He began within the first 60 days by adding outdoor music speakers, which was one of the specific conditions not allowed in order to obtain the preliminary site plan approval. Other conditions violated have been allowing and advertising large-scale events and weddings, adding catering and table service, and installing pizza ovens, just to name a few. In addition, he added this 5,150-square-foot extension inside the building and 1,294-square-feet of patio outside the building. Many, if not all, has been done without prior permits, authorization, or certificates of occupancy, and he continues to ask this board for forgiveness after the fact rather than obtaining permission prior. He has shown repeated disregard for procedures and seems to think rules are optional. It seems he thinks we're fools, as we have forgiven him time and again, but this time we need to say the Cider House does not rule. This board must not continue to reward bad behavior. A cease and desist letter must be sent to Mr. King. The additional unapproved structures must be removed, and a new agreement must be put in place, which states any recurrence will result in a penalty such as the law deems appropriate for a frequent offender. Thank this board for allowing me to speak and for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kathy McGraw from Northville. I may be revealing my age here, but when I was a kid, that was Warner's Potato Chips, and I sure wish it were still Warner's Potato Chips, because Mr. Warner would respect the law. Mr. King has thumbed his nose at all of you and all of us and the legal process for building in the town of Riverhead. He got away with it once in 2017, when the then-planning board approved as-built changes to his original site plan. In other words, instead of building what the planning board approved, he built what he wanted to build and then came back for the planning board's blessing. Well, he's back here again, because now he has significantly expanded his operation without your approval. His audacity is breathtaking. He has insulted you, he has insulted all of us, disrespected you, and defied you. Please don't let him get away with it yet again. If you approve this application, you will be sending a loud, clear message to all developers that in Riverhead, all you need to do is get some sort of a site plan approved, then you can build whatever you want. And when you ask for forgiveness, you'll get it from the planning board. If you don't say no to Mr. King, how do you say no to all those who will follow in his footsteps? Try as I might, I can't think of any legitimate reason to approve this site plan. I sure don't buy the COVID story. Can any of you think of a legitimate reason to approve this? Mr. King has blatantly ignored you and disrespected you. You should indeed be insulted, but if you let him get away with it again, then you all should be ashamed. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. George Barnik from North Calverton, I guess. As I mentioned the last time that I was giving a talk regarding this issue, my wife and I actually, probably a couple of months ago now, actually did go into the Cider House. I guess we were on a field trip, and I was impressed by all the people that had color in their hair, contrary to some of the other events that I attend now. I came across reviewing the comprehensive plan, the summary report for the updated comprehensive plan, and on page 38, it's interesting, a couple of paragraphs about agritourism and agretainment. And I'll just quote, read from this little section. "Survey respondents were generally in favor of expanding agritourism and events that celebrate the area's agricultural heritage and industry. However, many farms and wineries have begun catering operations for events and weddings. Sometimes new or expanded kitchens have been added, been built, to support these auxiliary uses. These uses generate impacts that are not anticipated, such as traffic, noise, and enforcement concerns. Zoning or event legislation should be adopted to deal with these impacts more effectively while recognizing the importance of economic contributions to the community to buy them." I can't believe that this couple of paragraphs probably was not written with the Cider House in mind. It's a blatant disregard for all of the approvals this committee, this planning board actually gave originally to the Cider House for processing of apples along with accessory hard cider tasting and retail sales. And I can guarantee you, when I was in there a couple of months ago now, there was not just cider tasting of hard cider. I think that the town, if you're probably aware a little bit of the history of Sound Avenue, where its designation came from to be a historic and scenic corridor, now this is almost 50 years ago, and I think that if the people who promoted the designation of historic corridor of Sound Avenue 50 years ago, if they drove down Sound Avenue now, they would be impressed probably by the limited change of Sound Avenue, given the amount of population growth in this town. You look at what's happened with Route 58, and Ed, you and I approved zoning that allowed the kind of development to take place there, but we also approved the kind of zoning that was intended to protect Sound Avenue from the type of development that Mr. King and the Cider House have actually provided on Sound Avenue. Much to the credit of the planning board, the zoning board, and the town board for recognizing the importance of preserving Sound Avenue and historic quality and the agricultural history of Sound Avenue, we've done a pretty good job. A couple of days ago, I was driving down to the Coop Bridge to pick up a takeout order, and I got stuck behind a Mercedes who was stuck behind a tractor, driving down the road very slowly, and I thought to myself, I wonder what Sound Avenue is going to look like in 50 years. It's up to the town. It's going to be really interesting for the town, the planning board, and the town board especially, to do what they can, as much as possible, to protect the heritage of Sound Avenue. Thank you very much.
George, I hope you're around in 50 years to see it.
I don't know about that, the guy.
Good evening. Phil Barbado, Jamesport. I'd just like to second everything that's been said excellently so far. I hope you take cognizant, serious consideration of these statements. This building has gone from a non-conforming use that was allowed to continue because there was a promise to store agricultural products in it, and maybe we'll do a little cider. Now, it's a wedding venue. Look at the website. They're really pushing wedding venues and lots of big events. This thing has gravitated from an old warehouse that should have been shut down to a major traffic jam, noise polluter, and wedding venue. You need to do the right thing here, and I hope you do. I really think that the applicant here has shown complete disregard, as has been mentioned, for the regulations of our town and has shown no respect to you all. So it's time to close the door on this. Thank you.
Hello, hello. Juan Machelli Martinez, downtown Riverhead resident and cider maker at the Riverhead Cider House. I just want to fully disclose that I'm obviously compensated to make cider at the Cider House, but I can say a couple of things. It's a respectable business. I have been there numerous times during different times of the day. It's mixed crowds, mixed ages. You see families, you see young people, you see older people. It's a place for local events to be held. I've seen the hospital, I've seen other not-for-profits holding events there. It has long-term economic impacts. They are not here to build a five-story building and then leave town. They support New York State craft beverage producers, they serve local wine, local beers, local spirits as well, too. They provide jobs to youth in our community and a fair amount from the Latino community, which is a strong resume builder for your first-time job to have something like the Cider House on your resume. The location in question has existed since it was built in the 1940s. It's not as if they've built an extension. It's all space that has already existed, and they're just looking to change the use. The intersection at Osborne and Sound is dangerous even when the business is closed. We've all been at that intersection at various times, whether it's opened or not, you're always having to really check before you cross that street. The pandemic, as was mentioned, has changed a lot, and, you know, I can say as the former general manager of Martha Clara Vineyards, I fully understand the positive impacts that private events can have on your bottom line, and it is critical to survival of the business. Event attendees very often for weddings, from my experience and from what I have seen, come in buses, so it does help reduce the amount of traffic that's coming. But in closing, I would emphasize to make sure that all is up to code, and that if there's any changes that need to be made, they should be made accordingly, but I am in support of permitting the use. Thank you.
Good evening. Sally Mackin from Bating Hollow. I'm a resident of Fox Hill in Calverton for 15 years, and I'm going to be brief, because a lot of people have already said exactly my feelings about being opposed to this expansion of Riverhead Cider House. I want to thank those speakers who've already shared, and I want to reinforce the word that approval could lead to other businesses following suit and applying for the same types of exemptions and exclusions and all kinds of ignoring of the agricultural protection zone that preserve our hamlet and preserve the historic corridor on Sound Avenue. I recently read an article from the Riverhead Local by Denise Civiletti, and I thought she was writing about the current application, but in fact, she was writing about the application that dates back to 2015 for exactly the same items, for the expansion, for the permitting, for all those things, and they were basically denied at that time, and yet here we are again, some eight years later, reviewing the same process. I'm a Realtor. As a point of fact, when I go and take out a client for a buyer or a seller to meet with them, one of the first things I ask about a property is, are there permits that are open? Is there variances that have not been sought? What has been granted that deviates from the original survey? And the fact of the matter is, those seem to be still open-ended here and/or refused from the get-go. So why are we still revisiting this eight years later? We, the people of Calverton, would greatly appreciate moving on to other issues, like the lavender farm that's up for a resolution this evening. Those are things that are more positive to our community and more in keeping with our One of the reasons that we don't want this, that we should be saying no, is that we, the residents of Calverton for sure, and of Sound Avenue, want to make sure that we do not end up with bars, catering halls, and nightclubs on Sound Avenue. That is not in keeping with the historic corridor as I understood it. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Walters. I live in Riverhead. I own Barbara Sweet Treats, and if it wasn't for the Riverhead Cider House, I wouldn't have the business that I have. They offered me a table at their front door so I can sell my cookies, and it has just, my business has blown up, and all they ask in return is that I make a donation, and I have kept all of my donations in Riverhead and all the nonprofits that they help and all. They're so community-based, and we all are, and they just, they do good for the community. So I'm not really a good public speaker, and I don't have a thing written out, but they have done wonders, and the place, it's great. They make their own ciders, they have their, people that come in there, they're there for fun, and that's what they do. They have a lot of fun. They're not rowdy, they're not outside, they're not, you know, bikers that are coming in, and there's no roughhousing going on at all. No one gets out of control, and they just, everybody has a good time that walks through those doors, because that's what they're there for, to have fun, and they create this fun. So, thank you for giving me my time.
You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. John Cullen, Northville. Congratulations on the St. Patty's Day Parade. You did great. I was there. So you go by. 63 days ago, I think we were in the same room when Mr. King came in and did not have his proper paperwork done. A lot of people left that night disappointed as they came down. Now we have Holy Thursday, and we have Passover, and you can see the room is packed tonight. If it wasn't those holidays, I'm sure there'd be some more people here. But I'd like to just say that, you know, Mr. King seems to be the king of asking for forgiveness in this town, and it's not right. The town needs to put a, you know, shut the door on those kind of people, unfortunately. And tomorrow being Good Friday, I hope it's going to be, unfortunately, a bad Friday for Mr. King. It's just that things, the way he thinks things go, just aren't right, as you heard earlier in the day. I had another line I wanted to say. I completely lost it. I want to thank you very much for this, and I hope that you deny this special.
Just so you know, I know the amount of people we can obviously see, but we have received quite a few call responses four and again, so there are other people that have made mention of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi there. Amanda Graham, Spanding Hollow. I just want to thank everybody for showing up tonight, and thank you everybody for your comments. They've been spot-on. I am offended that the attorney here thinks that the video we saw of a wedding was COVID-related and that we're supposed to just eat it. And the fact that perhaps he's never been there on a weekend to see the traffic and the parking on the grass all the way around, and you can't even get by. It's enough already with the pumpers and things like that, but to add insult to injury and try to insult us right now, saying that they're only needed because you asked for them, it's ridiculous. You know Sound Avenue. You've preserved Sound Avenue. Let's keep it going. You say yes to one, they're all going to go. And I think it's quite rude that you show up tonight, sir, in your condemnation and your tone to us. We live here. We live here. We bought homes here. Some people are here generations, and we want it this way. Thank you.
Good evening. Really wasn't going to say anything. My name's Robert Skinner. I live in Jamesport. I live within three-quarters of a mile nominally of Jamesport Manor, Clovis Point, Jason's, Tarravide, and a little less than a mile from RGNY. So the comments that have previously been made, especially if I could echo Mr. Bartunick, really ring home to me, because I could, you know, if things expand to, you know, in the manner and the type of expansion that it's depicted here, I could be in the crossfire for a number of different venues. I live 0.55 miles from Jamesport Manor. I have been subject to their wedding noise since 2021 in manners that I would not want anyone else to be subjected to, even at a half a mile away. So I fully understand the apprehension, the fear of the people who, a lot of what is described here that goes on in the Cider House now does not depict to me what a typical wedding reception is like. Wedding receptions are, the business is becoming more competitive, it's bigger, it's louder, it's more lavish, it's more social media presence, it's more, more, more. I don't know if that kind of more, more, more is compatible with what you would imagine in an agricultural protection zone, no less on a place like historic Sound Avenue. I would, I would just like to say that the concept of the wedding reception business...
Can I stop you with that?
Sure.
This is not about wedding receptions.
Yeah, but it is.
I know what you're referring to.
Yep.
I'd just like to keep it to exactly what we're discussing about the tasting room expansion.
I...
with this town or any of the people who decide to come here for any business purpose. I don't care whether they live here or not, but most of us live here and have to put up with all of this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any Zoomers?
Oh, do we have anybody on?
Yeah, I do have someone on too. A couple people on too. We have Andrew Levin. Andrew, if you can hear us, I'm going to allow you to talk. Just unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Andrew Levin. I live at 45 Tyler Drive. I agree with the other members of the public who are expressing their opposition to this application, but I think about it a little bit differently than I've heard it expressed, and just a little bit. For me, one of the things that this application about is the planning board as an institution itself. What you are hearing is that we want everyone to follow the rules because if people break the rules, and there are no consequences to breaking the rules, then there are no rules. If the planning board continues to allow applicants to build first and apologize later, then you, the planning board, are going to lose your effectiveness. You will lose the ability to protect us, and you will hollow out, you will hollow our land use ordinances out of existence. I don't think anybody's talking about closing down the cider house. There were some people who made some points in favor of that business. That's not what anybody's talking about. What we're talking about is having the rules and having them enforced. And on that basis, I urge you to deny this application.
Thank you.
Do we, we have John McCullough. John, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't be down there today. But I do want to emphasize that, at least in my mind, maybe I'm wrong, but in my mind, the planning board is the one guarantor of the quality of life of Riverhead. It's a weight that should affect your decision on this, on HK Ventures, on a variety of topics that have a long-term consequence. We're not talking simply about one more project. We're talking about what the future of Riverhead is going to be. Is it going to, over the course of the next couple or three decades, look like what we see to the west of us? And I certainly hope it isn't. That's not why we bought the house 30 years ago. That's not why we live here full-time now. I think the question that always goes into the local government is the issue of why decisions are made and whose interest decisions are made. Is it a question of who do you know? Is it a question of what campaign do you contribute to? Are you insulated from all of those factors that do play a role in lots of decision-making in this town? And historically, people have been suspicious that they played a role in earlier iterations of the planning board. I think that this planning board is a credible group of people, and I hope that you're able to resist the pressures to approve this project. Thank you.
And I have Mike Foley here as well. Mike, can you hear us? Mike?
Good evening. Mike Foley. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Mike Foley. I took a lot of interest in the applicant's attorney's statement because he called the cider house a restaurant. Per the 2017 planning board resolutions, we know that he's already violated, there shall be no weddings, we have video evidence of it. We know that he's already violated the fact that there will be no further expansion of the tasting room or public access areas without further application and approval by the planning board. It's already been stated that. And of course, the attorney also mentions that he didn't believe there'd be any problem with the patio expansion. He should understand that that's a public access area and is a clear violation of the covenants that this applicant has signed. But now we have the applicant's attorney calling it a restaurant. Now, I don't know a whole lot about Riverhead taxes, but I do believe that if he's a restaurant, he should be paying much higher tax rates than he's been sliding by with the largest bar on Sound Avenue since calling himself a tasting room. So I think that's something that I'll be working at very, very quickly when I return to town, to make sure that this applicant not only pays the taxes he's supposed to pay in the future, but maybe that he should get hit with retroactive taxes from the time that this restaurant has been acknowledged as actually existing. I think finally, you've heard all of the outrage of the people in the area. I believe that you guys are outraged at this. You're holding your composure. But clearly, he has been thumbing his nose at the process and the people that are appointed to uphold these processes for years. And here we are, here we are now. And it is just my hope, and my expectation, that not only will this planning board reject this application by a five-nothing count, but the attorney for the town of Riverhead, Eric Howard, and the code enforcement people that work under him are dudious in continuing to the shutdown process of these illegal places. It is clear that the patio has to be built, has to be ripped up. It is clear that the 5,150 square foot illegal wedding venue has to be shut down. And I've also turned, I've also been told, and I haven't seen it yet, that he's actually looking to have a movable wall from the north side of the room facing the patio so that he can play music indoors and have it go outside. Of course, that's another clear violation, but why would he stop at three or four when he can make a couple of bucks more by continuing to violate the rules of the historic Sound Avenue corridor and the planning board that is sworn in to uphold? So I'm confident you guys will do the right thing. I'm confident that the attorney for the town of Riverhead will find this guy to the maximum extent available under our laws. And I'm confident that we will shut this thing down and confine it to what already is a violation of the intent once this guy put his permit in to put up a couple of apple trees at the new cider tasting. What a joke. God bless America. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
I think one more speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Blas. I live in Jamesport. I do not support the expansion of the cider house as it already been built and has the application before you tonight. I actually was researching something totally different and came across minutes from a meeting of 2003 that are really very relevant to the tonight's proceedings. Ed, you won't remember it, but you and I were up there when we had a public hearing. It was January of 2003. And we were contemplating adding a section that adds language so that anyone who violates the actual site plan, that's approved. Now, this is Supervisor Kazakhovich at the time speaking. I think there was a sense by our board that all too often, we go through an extensive process. We review site plans, we impose conditions, and at the end of the day, there's not enough enforcement to make sure that the conditions are being adhered to. So what we did at the time was to add language that talks about the length, the amount of fines, the repetitive nature of the fines. And again, this is verbatim, so understand that the language is a little different. So the desire here, Supervisor, the desire here is to try and make sure that we have enforcement teeth, that we give the tools to the town attorney's office, the prosecuting agency, to go in there and wield the big bat to make sure that when people do screw around, excuse my French, with an approved plan, they'll be made to pay for it. I'm not sure the degree of violations that have been assessed against the applicant. I don't know if there's current occupancy, you know, that it's current based upon the new and expanded uses inside. But I do believe at this point, the, if he has been assessed monetary violations, perhaps it's not doing, it's not a big enough bat, in other words. And I think he, the expansion that was done illegally should be not approved, and it should be actually withdrawn. Thank you very much for your time.
Were you trying to come up? No? Go ahead.
So the Kings took this eyesore of a plumbing supply building years ago and turned it into a beautiful, multi-generational, family-oriented venue. Mr. Foley wants to call it a restaurant. He can call it whatever it wants. That isn't what it is. Every piece of equipment that's there was applied for and had been approved. The pizza ovens were approved. Contrary to what Ms. Bianco said, there is no table service. It's not a restaurant. There are no outside music speakers. We had applied for them, and they were denied. We had, okay, so you admit that there are no speakers outside? Okay. Fair enough.
Just address the board, please. Please let the speaker speak, please.
We had to undergo a decibel study for the noise volume and clearly passed that study by many decibels. That's never been an issue. As far as the parking goes and the traffic, we had to have a traffic study performed by the company that Mr. Murphy said we had to have it done by. We did have that study done. We passed that study. There's never been an issue in that regard. The Kings pay over $70,000 in real estate taxes a year. I can't even fathom the amount of sales tax that they are paying. They employ 30 people, most of them local, a lot of them kids, as Mr. Martinez pointed out, many from the Latino community, local high school kids. They sponsored, Mr. Martinez, who I've not had the privilege of meeting before, but I appreciate the fact that he happened to spoke. And I think the board has been provided with a letter that delineates all of the charitable events that the Kings have sponsored. There were over 40 of them last year alone. And by sponsor, as the woman with the sweet treats pointed out, the Kings provide the food and beverage, and the charities get to benefit from whatever they raise there. They don't, the Kings, the cider house, doesn't derive any revenue from those events. They are a good community neighbor. They do the right thing. Their business hours are 11 to 7. There's never been an incident of any type of violation or any type of violence, any type of outbreak, any type of police, they have not had a problem there since they opened the doors. Mr. Warner, somebody mentioned the Warner Potato Factory. I have not had the benefit or privilege of meeting Mr. Warner, but I believe he is here tonight. He is their biggest next-door neighbor, and I would venture to say if there was a problem, he would have something to say about that. I think that Mr. Warner would agree that the cider house is a good neighbor. Somebody got up and mentioned about parking on the grass. No car has ever parked on the grass around the cider house. Perhaps they were referring to in years past, Bating Hollow Vineyard or the, is it Liv, Long Island Vodka, where I do come out almost every weekend and see cars parked all over the grass there in the past. I haven't seen that recently, so I assume that that was addressed properly and those people are compliant. But I do know that there has never been an issue involving the cider house with vehicles parking on the grass. And I would note that other than the Bating Hollow Vineyard, the cider house is the furthest western venue for any type of winery or other entertainment venue in Riverhead. You first pass the winery, and then you get to the cider house. So any traffic that is created would be west of that, and it's not related to the cider house. It's roughly an 8,000-square-foot venue. I can pretty much assure you that in view of pumpkin picking and people buying pies at Briarmere where the traffic is unbelievable, this is inconsequential to the local traffic volume. The Kings are here looking to have their application granted. We've been here now three times. Every time there was an issue, we've shown up. We're not looking to circ any responsibility whatsoever. We're always looking to do the right thing and give back to the community. So I respectfully request that you grant their application. Thank you.
Before you leave, I'd just like to say one thing. I was very impressed when I saw Mr. King's list of the people that he helps. I was quite impressed by it. That's not what this is about. That's not what this hearing is about. This is about building and expanding without coming to the town first and asking to do it. For all the right reasons you're saying, for space, for, fine, come and ask first.
No question about that. I'm not taking argument with that.
Okay.
Good evening. Tocque Church and Greater Calverton Civic Association President. Just for a quick raise your hands. Anybody who's raising their hand right now is against this project, not because they're a good business, not because they do good things, not because they help smaller businesses get their wares sold. It is because they're not fair as a neighbor, and they're not fair to our town, and they're not following the needed rules for safety. And I'll leave it at that. We gathered here, as the applicant's attorney just mentioned, three times, but he didn't say, what he left out was, we're here because the applicant last time flubbed up the paperwork, and we came anyway. We filled the room. There was about 20 or so folks there then, and we really felt like that wasn't the right thing. And now here we are again, and we're showing up. We could be spending Holy Week a different way. One other last thought I'd like to leave with you is, I've said before to you that the civic is not a naysayer. We're not negative on every point that we bring to you. We're positive, and we've shown that to you. One of the things that's on your agenda tonight, we're very positive about, and that's supporting our local farmers with the true local farmers. And I say that because Mr. King is not a true farmer. He's not farming his land in the APZ and providing a product. But the lavender farm is, and we support it, and we hope that you vote favorably for
I was quite impressed by him. That's not what this is about. That's not what this hearing is about. This is about building and expanding without coming to the town first and asking to do it. For all the right reasons you're saying, for space, for, fine, come and ask first.
No question about that. I'm not taking argument with that.
Good evening, Tocque Church and Greater Calverton Civic Association President. Just for a quick raise your hands, Calverton? Anybody who's raising their hand right now is against this project, not because they're a good business, not because they do good things, not because they help smaller businesses get their wares sold. It is because they're not fair as a neighbor, and they're not fair to our town, and they're not following the needed rules for safety. And I'll leave it at that. We gathered here, as the applicant's attorney just mentioned, three times, but he didn't say, what he left out was, we're here because the applicant last time flubbed up the paperwork, and we came anyway, and we filled the room. There was about twenty or so folks there then, and we really felt like that wasn't the right thing. And now here we are again, and we're showing up. We could be spending Holy Week a different way. One other last thought I'd like to leave with you is, I've said before to you that the civic is not a naysayer. We're not negative on every point that we bring to you. We're positive, and we've shown that to you. One of the things that's on your agenda tonight, we're very positive about, and that's supporting our local farmers, with the, the true local farmers. And I say that because Mr. King is not a true farmer. He's not farming his land in the APZ and providing a product. But the lavender farm is, and we support it, and we hope that you vote favorably for them and set aside this application. Thank you very much.
Before I close the public hearing, I want to thank-
Sorry, I have more people on Zoom.
Oh, you don't?
Yeah, I have one new speaker than Mike Foley wanted to ask if he'd been speaking yet. It didn't quite need to three minutes, but I do have a new speaker who did not get a chance to speak yet.
Well, listen to the new speaker.
Angela Zavito. Angela, you could just unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Yes, can you hear me?
You can speak a little bit louder.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Great.
Better? Okay. Good evening. I'll be very brief. I think that the King family counsel, when he stated that they like to do the right thing, obviously, they haven't done the right thing. That's why we're here, and their application is before you, and why they were in court earlier today paying off a fine assessed against them. And I know that when you look, look at the application and what is being asked for, you will know that it is not the right thing, and you will vote against it. And I thank you for your time.
As long as Mike's very, very quick.
Mike, if you could be very brief. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I didn't realize I was on. Thank you for giving me a chance to report the attorney's comment. I was not the first person to mention the Cider House was as a restaurant, sir. You did. In your opening comments, you referred to the Cider House as a restaurant. And I brought that up just because I believe if that is the case, and clearly it is now, you represent the applicant, he should be taxed at a higher rate, and I will be pursuing.
All right, Mike, we're gonna cut you off there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I started to say before, I want to thank the audience for acting like good Riverhead folks and giving respect to the speakers, and everybody was well behaved on a very contentious item, so I want to thank you all for that. With that said, I want to close the public hearing for Riverhead Cider House. So moved.
Vote, please. McNarrow.
Yes.
Aye.
Oday.
Yes.
Nsaski.
Aye.
Before I vote, I just want to say thank you so much for coming out, for saying what you've said, for your letters. I want you to know that we have read all of your letters, we're listening to you, we hear you. And I vote yes to close the public hearing. We will keep the written comment period open for ten days.
Do we know Joe's on Zoom?
Can you, do we have that in? All right, is Joe still on Zoom?
He's still here.
Hi, Joe.
Yes, hi.
Mr. Bear, our other board member. Do you have a vote, Joe?
Yes, close it, please.
All right, so we're going to move on now to our discussion items. We'll give it one minute to let the room clear out.
There's no resolution on it.
No, no resolution.
No resolution.
On the agenda next, for next meeting?
I can't promise for the next meeting. I personally do not know at this point what the next agenda's going to look like.
Okay, thank you.
It will be available on the website prior to the meeting, so if you just keep looking at it. All right, we're going to keep that on.
Joe's on Zoom, just a second. Okay. Go from Zoom, or else.
Thank you.
I love the scarf.
Pardon me?
I love the scarf, very pretty.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. I don't know why I was gonna call this sentence. It's all being recorded.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thanks for getting on. So for the record, Heather Toshowski, site plan reviewer. The planning department has received and reviewed a farm stand application. I don't know if you're familiar with the lavender farm on Manor Road. They're looking to establish a new farm stand on an eleven point zero four eight acre parcel located at three five three four Middle Country Road in Calverton for the purposes of selling lavender and lavender-related products. The proposed improvements consist of the installation of a ten by forty portable cargo container, which will be used as the farm stand, an improved driveway entrance on Middle Country Road, stone parking area, a drainage area, and then an eight-foot deer fence around the parcel perimeter. The subject parcel is identified as Subakanian Taxent number six hundred dash ninety-nine dash two dash nineteen point one, and it's located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Middle Country Road and Manor Road. It's also lot one of the Calverton Manor subdivision, which was a minor subdivision approved by this board by resolution number two thousand nineteen dash zero ninety-nine back in February of two thousand nineteen. And the subject parcel is currently planted with lavender crops. I'm sure you all drive down State Route twenty-five and you see this currently planted out with lavender. The lot right behind it is lot two of the Calverton Manor Minor subdivision, forty-seven Manor Road, and that's also engaged in farming and harvesting lavender, and it operates that existing farm stand, which was approved by Planning Board Resolution number two thousand twenty-one dash ninety-eight in September of two thousand twenty-one. So the majority of the subject parcel is located within the rural corridor zoning use district, and RLC does allow farm stands as an accessory use, and they are customer incidental to ag production, which is permitted use as a right in RLC. And the farm stand itself, parking area, and drainage area are all going to be located on the southwestern portion of the parcel that fronts on Middle Country Road. As far as SEACRA is concerned, the proposed farm stand application is considered Type Two action, no further environmental review will be required. Moving on to the site plan itself, the site plan depicts a total of fifty ten-by-twenty parking stalls and a twenty, twenty-eight-foot wide drive aisle. There is, was a separate farm stand description submitted with the application. Not sure if you guys got a chance to look at it, and it identifies forty-six parking spaces and two handicap compliance stalls. So the accessible stalls will have to be improved. The remainder of the lot can be gravelled with parking stops, but in our code, farm stands don't actually have a specific parking requirement. So if you were to look at, you know, the, any other commercial or business not otherwise expressly provided for in the code, the requirement is one space per three hundred square feet of floor area. Given the fact that the cargo container to be used as the farm stand is only four hundred square feet, the farm stand itself would only require two parking stalls. So they're proposing significantly more parking spaces than required. So staff would have no objection to reduction of the proposed number of stalls, and, you know, if they need to land bank the rest and improve them with gravel at a later date, should it be necessary, if the planning board would want to see that. I see no reason to have fifty parking spaces for the farm stand. I did refer the application to the engineering department, and they did send back a memo February twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-three with a couple of comments. The engineer got right on that and provided us with amended plans, which you have dated March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. So he made the changes requested by the town engineer. As far as the access to the site is concerned, the New York State DOT did approve the curb cut and the driveway entry, the improved driveway entry onto New York State Route twenty-five.
Was there any consideration on doing it on Manor Lane?
So I did point that out in my staff report. You know, the subject parcel is directly across from the proposed Calverton Industrial subdivision, and I mean, it's a subdivision, so we don't know exactly where the driveway is going to end up based on the different sketch plans that they've submitted to us. But I do think that both driveways should be coordinated in order to avoid any potential traffic hazards, or in the alternative, the entry could be put on Manor Road just because you have the traffic signal there. It would facilitate left-hand turns. But I'll let Pat Moore speak as to why they wanted the access directly onto State Road.
Actually, the whole impetus on this application is that what they found from operating at the Manor Road site is that off-season, and, you know, you have the peak season July, which is the French lavender bloom, but aside from that, you have more of a continuous, less intensive season. And what they were finding is that the Manor Road location was just not attracting the activity that they anticipated. The property on, on, was it Route twenty?
Middle Country.
Middle Country Road. That's actually a commercial zone property, and we, really was the impetus for this application. Obviously, you don't want to have to carry two farm stands, but what they were experiencing was that it was frustration because they really do need the access on, on the main through fair. During the peak of the season in July, most likely, the farm stand will be operating from the Manor, Manor Road site. But off-season, which is those periods of time when the peak bloom is not in full bloom, they do need this site. So they did consider it, they went to the DOT first and foremost to make sure that the DOT would consider the, the traffic patterns and the access. And I wouldn't want the subdivision, which is going to be a multimillion-dollar commercial enterprise-
Oh, yeah. Agreed.
-to carry, you know, tail wagging the dog here.
I'm surprised the DOT approved it, to be honest with you, because before they didn't have coverage because there was no lavender up front.
Right.
You could not see the lavender from twenty-five, but now it's all lavender. But I mean, if, you know, if the DOT's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I just thought it would be wiser on the side.
Yeah, I mean, if you're concerned about, like, my concern is just left turns in and out of the site. The turning lane striping for the left-hand turn from twenty-five onto Manor actually starts where that proposed driveway entry is.
Yep.
I did speak with Mr. Rosemam, and he said he would be amenable to no left-hand turns in or out. I mean, I know we can't stop people from-
We'll put the sign up.
But if that's something that you would like to see-
We're not gonna be a police officer, but otherwise.
From a safety standpoint, if that's something the planning board wants to see, he did say he would be amenable to it. The ag advisory committee was finally reviewed the application. They did discuss that curb cut on the main road, but they felt that the placement for it and the farm stand, it was going to be the most successful for the farmer. And I mean, you know, that's why they're here, is to continue the farming practice.
Sure, certainly wanted to be successful.
And the parking area, is that going to be gravelled asphalt?
Gravel, it's gonna be gravel. Obviously, the driveway's gonna be improved, and then wherever their handicap stalls are, which I'm gonna, they'll, their engineer will have to show those on the site plan, those will need to be improved.
We did talk about the possibility that, not really knowing how much parking is going to be necessary, possibly do it either, you know, maybe with land banking with the town, if you see that there's a problem, certainly, it's in their best interest to make sure that the customers get on the property and are safe. So the, the area's already been cleared from plants. I did ask that, I said, oh, did you already remove the lavender? And he said, yes, that that had already been done. But whether or not it has to be really with gravel and material, it'd be nice to not have to invest that if you don't need it. If eventually you find you don't need all that parking, you plant it and you regenerate it.
And what is the vision of what this farm stand is going to look like?
Just like the other one, actually. It's a smaller container. The Manor Road one has, I think, three containers, if I recall, three or four, but there are various sizes, there's storage, drying containers. This is really, I think there's one container for purposes of the material, but it's just like it has been, you know, I think they had maybe a tent temporarily, whatever the building department felt comfortable with, but it wasn't-
So it's a walk-up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, no.
I imagine it'll be purple?
Purple, yes. Lavender.
I was gonna say-
Lavender.
So, do you, does the board have any other questions, concerns? I didn't put this on for resolution tonight, just because I wanted to hammer out all the details and go back to the applicant and their design professional, and then at the next meeting, I could have it on to classify SEACRA and then also approve it if you're okay with that.
I love that this is-
It's a farm stand, but it's lavender, lavender, lavender.
So the code, based on the code, only two, and then a handicap stall.
Well, we have enough for forty-something, but whether or not we're going to develop it all, I think I'm gonna leave it to staff to tell us, give us the recommendation. I think it's been drawn with forty-eight, I believe is what you said, forty-eight, something like that.
Yeah, it said fifty on here, but then the description said forty-six plus a two handicap. I would just keep it under fifty because per the town code, fifty stalls or more pushes you into Type One, so there's sort of a discrepancy between state Type Two and our Type One, so I would say less than fifty.
Okay. Great. Very good.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate how quickly you got it on. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Wow, you have some applause out there. I did not expect that this evening. We must be doing something right with the lavender farm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, let's get on to Riverhead.
Hyundai.
With Matt Charters.
I don't know if I have a representative from the applicant here or not.
Come on up.
I should clarify, Matt Charters is planning for the town of Riverhead. Apparently, I said I was Matt Charters, planning for the town of Southampton earlier. I had a little Freudian slip. Forgot where I work. Yeah. All right, so we have Riverhead Hyundai, this is eighteen hundred Old Country Road. You're familiar, this is right outside in front of Costco. If you remember, last year, Riverhead Nissan was in facade improvements. This is sort of a similar project. They are doing additions as well. Sorry, Larry.
Don't make Larry mad.
So as I said, facade improvements in additions to an existing car dealership. So they're bumping out the back of the building for more service space. They're having to close service drive on the east side of the building, so that'll be similar to what they have at Riverhead Bay Motors where Volkswagen is with the roll-up door. And then there's gonna be a small awning on the west side of the building, so that will be for finally, final delivery of vehicles, so I guess when you go pick up your car, you're not out in the rain. Additionally, in the back, they're moving some light poles and landscape islands back to keep a twenty-four-foot travel aisle. They're relocating some parking on the Nissan side of the site, just so they have twenty-four feet on that side, and they're proposing some new EV charging stations. In terms of SEACRA, this is unlisted, I'm not seeing any environmental impacts as a result.
Is there an increase in impervious surface?
No, actually. It's pretty much, I mean, well, it would be, I guess, for the additional roofed area, but there's not gonna be more pavement.
Okay. Are they removing any trees or vegetation?
No, not that I know of, no.
Is the site compliant with Dog Sky?
Yes, if you recall, I think it was back in twenty seventeen or eighteen, they came in and redid it, the lighting on the whole site. There was a site plan approval that recently was, you know, they closed it out before they actually did the Nissan facade changes. So all the lightings are new there, and they actually did replacements as well. Back to SEACRA, it's unlisted, I'm anticipating any significant environmental impact, so I'm recommending it at deck. They are overparked. Parking required for this would be one hundred and sixty-one stalls, they have one hundred and seventy-four. One recommendation that I do have that's on page one of my staff report, in terms of cross-access on the site, there's one cross-access point that goes to the exit of Costco, that old shopping center. So basically, if you wanted to, if you were on the Nissan and Hyundai site and you wanted to go to Costco, you'd have, and you'd have to leave, go through the light, and then come back in. So my recommendation is maybe to have a future cross-access point somewhere in the northern portion of this property. I identified some areas in this report.
It's excellent.
Yeah, just off of that connectivity. And then in terms of ADA, there'll be six- And then in terms of ADA, there'll be six stalls, they just do need to show the eight-foot adjacent width on some of them, and then there's a couple locations for the proposed chart...
Eight-foot stalls?
Eight-foot adjacent area next to the ADA, so like, it's a ten-foot wide stall, and then they have to have the eight-foot van accessible width. In terms of the charging stations, there's a couple that are on the west side that, I don't know, there, it's, there's some existing brush where they're placed, if there's a car charging, I don't know how you're supposed to drive around the car, so they might need to relocate them. Other than that, it's been referred out, we've got comments back from the town engineer, he had no issue, and we're just waiting for other comments. George DeVito.
Pat, do you think there'll be any problems with the, um, the right-of-way, you know, given the cross-access?
I don't think so.
You know, because that, that, there's a bottleneck trying to get out of that place. What I don't want is, I don't want people trying to cut through that place.
Yeah, so they, so that's on the existing exit right-of-way, so what I was talking about is more on like the northern portion, that's by, you know, like right in the back of the Costco gas station, and then if you go further west, it's actually lines up pretty well with the travel aisle that goes along the side of Costco, where the liquor store is, so you can kind of get through. I don't really see too much of an issue, but I know there is a bottleneck down there.
Why don't we, you know, include it up to the property right now? So when Costco comes down for whatever they want.
That's exactly right.
All right.
Yep.
So just to clarify, were you, are you, is your concern that people are now going to use going through the Hyundai Nissan site to exit rather than go through?
A lot of these, a lot of these places now get used for traffic.
Yeah, to come through.
I just don't want to see it happen, be a mess.
I mean, that, that probably is a, I mean, again, we can discuss it, but I just wanted to get the...
Clarify, cool.
Rather than people trying to exit out to fifty-eight through the light, now that they, if there's an established cross-access, now they're trying to exit, it's my business, so that's...
I don't think you can pick it up, Greg, but I can...
A lot of signage in there, you know, not a...
Yeah, not exit, we can direct them to the, we can direct them to the light, which is what, kind of what they do to the shopping center now, so if you're familiar where Alta is, everything tells you like, this is how you go to get onto fifty-eight, so I think we would encourage it. And to make the point, there'll be future cross-access that will...
Thank you, Greg.
Will improve, you know, when the fire from Costco or somebody else comes in. I have two resolutions, one is for the neg deck and another for a public hearing, which would be May fourth.
Okay.
Joe, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Yes. Hello?
All right, we can hear you, just speak up a little bit.
Can I get muted, unmuted?
You're unmuted, we can hear you.
Ed?
Yeah?
Ed, I had a question about the cross-access.
Okay.
It's one thing to say that you can go from the dealership into Costco, but sooner or later, they're going to find out, people are going to find out you can go the other way.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, Joe, that's what George had just added, so we, we'll have to consider that if it's, if it's going to be required, but that can come through the review.
Could also be one-way.
Could be one-way.
Yeah.
Or a twelve or a fourteen-foot access where do not enter signage, facing the Costco site, so that people are going to Costco, not going to...
We could do it so it'd be, allow people to leave this site to go into Costco, but not vice versa.
Well, you could put one of those bars that raise, that go down when you go to Costco and come up, so they can't go the other way.
Yeah.
We could kind of drive up window, too, Joe.
Like a toll booth.
It's not a toll booth, but it'll keep them from going moving.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else? Good?
I'm good.
Good.
Good? All right. Thank you, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
All right, Greg.
All right.
You're up, HK Ventures.
All right, thank you. I do know we have some representatives from the applicant.
How you doing?
How you doing?
How you doing?
Good. Nice to see you all.
You look very sprigish.
Thank you.
All right, so what we're here...
Greg, if we could just get the names for the representatives.
Keith Brown, Brown, Altman, Delio, five thirty-eight Broad Hall Road, Suite three oh one West, Melville, New York, one one seven four seven, zoning attorney for the applicant.
Caitlin Keim, PW Grocer Consulting, located at six thirty Johnson Avenue, Suite seven Balighino, one one seven one six, Senior Environmental Planning, SEACRA, and so those are the applicants.
We have two other people in the audience and one person on Zoom, I'd like to introduce them to Jack.
Jack Pronto, Key Civil Engineering, Site Engineer for the project.
Scott Johns.
Got to be louder.
Scott Johns, HK Ventures.
And finally, we have Ms. Amanda LaRosa from Stonefield Engineering and Design, she is on Zoom.
Hi, all, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
I'm in.
All right, so for the record, Greg Bergman, planner with the town of Riverhead. So what we are here to discuss is a draft finding statement that would essentially wrap up the SEACRA review for a site plan application, or as HK Ventures, which is a proposed industrial park. It proposes to develop a vacant thirty-acre site on the south side of Middle Country Road in Calverton with an industrial and commercial complex consisting of eight buildings with a total square footage of approximately four hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. This application was submitted to the town back in, I believe it was April of twenty-twenty, so we're kind of getting on to the three-year mark now. There's been an extensive SEACRA review, and I will kind of briefly go over the draft finding statement. This was initially distributed to the board back at the end of February, we were going to have it on the first, for discussion, the first meeting in March, it was adjourned at the applicant's request, so we're here to discuss it. I trusted everybody who's had time to review the draft finding statement, I know I've had conversations with the planning board, I've had conversations with the applicant, so rather than go through twenty-four pages of it, I'm, we'll kind of wrap it up with the conditions that are in the draft finding statement and discuss it to the board. So in summary of the entire review, the end result was, this draft finding statement would issue a positive findings for the project with certain conditions to be met in order to mitigate environmental impacts. The first impact, and we'll, we'll circle back to them, but I'll just go through them right now. So the first condition was that the proposed New York State DOT reconstruction of the New York twenty-five Edwards Avenue intersection is completed and functional prior to the issuance of any building permits for the proposed project, that infrastructure improvements as detailed in the Riverhead Water District Map and Plan Report are provided by the applicant, that the occupancy of the facility shall be such that no individual user or tenant shall occupy more than one building in its entirety in order to ensure that the purpose and intent of the industrial C zoning district, Town Code Section three oh one dash one twenty-one, is achieved, that annual groundwater monitoring at two locations on the subject property will take place in order to ensure the continued integrity of the Nassau Aesop sole source aquifer, that in the absence of the applicant obtaining an incidental taking permit from the New York State DEC, that tree clearing on the subject property will be prohibited between March one and November thirty-first of any calendar year, and that a new natural gas analysis will be required from National Grid prior to final site plan approval, as National Grid's commitment letter had expired on February twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three. I do just want to add, I did really kind of review this back, there was some language earlier in the document about requiring a soil monitor, just to ensure that the grading and soil management plan was adhered to, so I would just offer that, again, that was just kind of formalized at the end. To some of the points, I have received several correspondences from the applicant's representatives. One of the ones that I would like to kind of just get out of, I will say the low-hanging fruit, there was a request for modification for the proposed groundwater monitoring. What I had initially written in the document was two locations, one at an up gradient location, one at a down gradient location. The reason for that was that there was traces of PFOS and PFOA in the groundwater. Again, I do state in the document that it is highly unlikely that the presence of those substances is in any way created by the current property owner or the developer, however, the fact that it was in the ground should just give the planning board, you know, some cause for concern. Again, being that we don't know the end users of the property, there could be a manufacturing use, so that was the reason why that was in there. The applicant had submitted a letter from PW Grocer that basically requested, proposed two alternative options for the groundwater monitoring. Now, this is all based on the fact that the sewage treatment plant on-site will be required to have groundwater monitoring wells. So option one was to allow the use of two groundwater monitoring wells to be installed for the SDP for use in obtaining the annual groundwater quality data, and option two was to require the installation of additional groundwater monitoring wells if a future tenant proposes to store and/or manage hazardous waste, thus required permitting from the Subcavity Department Health Services. I would have no objection to that first condition, to allow the existing groundwater-to-monitor wells that are going to be installed to be used for the monitoring. And again, I think if there's any future issues where a tenant is going to be storing any types of hazardous waste, we could further explore option two, so no objection to that. Where the real significant impact, and I understood in drafting this document that it was going to be a condition that would require some discussion, was regarding the reconstruction of the twenty-five and Edwards Avenue intersection. So just to kind of play back to history, because again, from the draft environmental impact statement, we're going back to May of twenty-twenty-one, so I can understand that two years has passed, not everything's fresh in everyone's memory. So to go back to the DEIS in May of twenty-twenty-one, there's a statement in the DEIS, I believe it's on page one thirty-eight, which says that the DEIS assumes that the applications of island water park and tractor supply retail build-out, as well as the safety enhancements at New York State Route twenty-five and Edwards Avenue will occur prior to completion of Phase one of the proposed development, which was anticipated to be completed per the DOT's design manual in twenty-twenty-three. When the planning board accepted that draft environmental impact statement, we did ask for an analysis of that intersection, absent any of those proposed improvements, understanding that if that was not, were not to happen, how would that intersection function? The May twenty-twenty-two final environmental impact statement was when it was reviewed by the board, there was a comment on that final EIS, I believe it is on page twelve of the final EIS. It stated, "It is not expected that the projected volumes of trucks associated with construction of the proposed development would perceptibly impact the intersection of Middle Country Road and Edwards Avenue, either in its current configuration or its configuration after the New York State DOT improvements are constructed." So that statement in and of itself speaks to the construction impacts, which again, the applicant anticipated was approximately fifteen trucks per day, so fifteen in, fifteen out, about thirty trips a day. I would agree with the statement that those thirty trucks in and of itself would probably not constitute a significant impact. What is important here, and again, SEACRA, timing is mentioned throughout the SEACRA handbook, timing, timing, timing. So up until this point, we were operating with the belief that the twenty-five and Edwards Avenue intersection would be reconstructed by twenty-twenty-three, again, based on the applicant's statements, that would have coincided with Phase one of the project, so it really would have been sort of rendered kind of a moot point. We did receive comments from our outside traffic consultant, L.K. McLean, in July of twenty-two, and they were, the applicant, our consultant noted a discrepancy between the TIS in that final EIS and the New York State DOT's findings. Essentially, the TIS within the final environmental impact statement rated that Edwards Avenue intersection at a level of service operating at B, C, and B at different periods throughout the day. The state DOTs in their draft design manual found it to operate at those same times at levels, I believe it was D, C, D, and then it also noted the critical turning movements at that intersection, so meaning making a left turn at that intersection, I believe it had those rated at levels of E or F. Essentially, with the state DOT's draft design report, acknowledged that twenty-five and Edwards is a failing intersection, they acknowledged the problem, spending several million dollars to reconstruct that intersection. Again, what I will say is that it's very important to understand that up until this point, we were operating under the assumption that that intersection would be completed to coincide with the construction of this project, really wouldn't have been an issue, so we didn't press that issue.
So the TIS took in, the other, actually included a cumulative analysis of all the planned developments?
Well, yeah, so there was, I'll, I'll get to that, so the initial draft environmental impact statement, because at that point, we had only really received, you know, Island Water Park was being reviewed, and the tractor supply retail site just west of here, they had room, approval for three additional pad sites, so at that point, those were the only pending applications, again, in, by May of twenty-twenty-one. Subsequently, we have received several developments, several applications for large development in the surrounding area, so in October of twenty-twenty-two, the board issued a positive declaration requiring the preparation of a supplemental impact statement, and we scoped it out in that POS deck and required the applicant to study the cumulative impacts of those new developments that hadn't been captured in either the draft or the final. So here is where we came now, when I emailed the New York State DOT, I received confirmation from the DOT in December of twenty-twenty-two that the applicant, the proposed improvements at twenty-five and Edwards had been delayed. They were anticipating construction to begin in early twenty-twenty-four, and they anticipated completion sometime in the spring, sometime in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. So after that, the board set forth the requirements of the supplemental impact statement. Now, I will acknowledge that at that point, the board could have required in that final supplemental a further analysis to address these discrepancies between the state DOT's findings and the applicant's finding statements, and that's where we, that's kind of where we got to today, you know, the culmination of that final. Now, what we're dealing with is, anyone who lives in the town, works in the town, comes through the town for the weekends to visit, will tell you that twenty-five and Edwards is a difficult intersection to get through, and numerous times of the day, you know, the Riverhead Charter School goes, when those buses are going, it's very difficult to get through that intersection. So what we have within the SEACRA record is a significant discrepancy between the applicant's traffic impact statement and the DOT's finding statement. Now, I understand, from an applicant's point of view, the decision to not issue a building permit in the absence of that reconstruct that intersection, it's not a popular decision, but knowing what we know about twenty-five and Edwards Avenue, you know, there's an analogy that someone said, basically, if there was a bridge that you needed to go over to get to this project, if that bridge was unable to handle the trucks and the traffic from that, you know, to that project, you'd have to rebuild the bridge. Here, we don't have a bridge, we have an intersection. So I, you know, when we look at the record in its entirety, I believe that the decision for the issuance of a building permit prior, to not issue a building permit prior to the reconstruct that intersection is a well-reasoned decision, it is supported by the record, and I think that is a critical intersection, you know, that, that is the gateway into Calverton for a lot of these industrial projects when they're going to be coming in, so.
For the record, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I am an expert on traffic in Riverhead, because I've lived here in my life, like many of you. When somebody from up island comes out here and tells me that's a B, C, or D, they're used to sitting in turmoil and traffic jams. We are not. We have a problem there, it has to be resolved, the seat, keeping the county seat, Riverhead on the back burner isn't right, the applicant's going to suffer, suffer, but if you do this project before that intersection is fixed, you're going to create a big, big, big problem. That's just my opinion.
I agree. I really do not think that the time is right now to have these trucks coming in, and this area needs to be fixed, that intersection is horrible, and like Ed said, we, we're on these roads every day, and we see how hard it is to navigate through there. You have the big Hampton jitney buses coming through, you have other trucks coming through to go to the industrial park, and they're having such a hard time navigating their way through it, and it's just going to wreak havoc on the area. And when our planner is recommending to us that this needs to happen first before a building permit can be granted, I have to go with what the planning department is recommending to, to us, because it makes absolute sense, except, except, oh, my goodness, especially about the bridge, I mean, that's, that just makes sense, it puts it into just the common theory of why this intersection is not going to, to work.
With respect, if I could be heard on the issue?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and put this on for discussion purposes only, we appreciate the opportunity, rather than just going ahead and adopting a finding statement with the condition. This condition is a serious problem for the project. I first want to start out by thanking the planning staff and the job they did with respect to the SEACRA finding statement. I first want to start out by thanking the planning staff and the job they did with respect to the SECRE finding statement and the comprehensiveness and the professionalism in which Mr. Bergman has conducted himself. However, we want to address certain aspects of the finding statement, in particular, obviously, the conditions that are contained within the finding statement and certain ones at that. As you know, Planning Board is lead agency. These conditions are 1,000% within your discretion. And we wanted the opportunity to come out and discuss it. I would like to take a moment, though, and go through, there are some aspects which I think are very important, not only for this board to hear, but also for the members of the public that are here. Just if I could recap just a couple of things. On page 20 of the finding statement, there's a statement relative, it's under alternatives, the section, there's a statement. "The comparative analysis contained within the DEIS for the alternative development plans generally demonstrated that impacts from alternative developments would have greater environmental impacts than the proposed action." Moving ahead to the section that refers to needs and benefits on page 22, there's a statement in the findings that says, "Overall, the market studies demonstrated a need for the type of industrial space proposed by the applicant. Anecdotally, the planning department consistently receives requests and phone inquiries regarding availability of vacant industrial space in which businesses can find space to operate within the township of Riverhead." And I will say that to date, the applicant has received requests to lease over 150,000 square feet of the 400,000 proposed, but we cannot make any firm commitments due to the current state or lack thereof of the zoning approval process. I'd also just point out too, just if I may, excuse me a second, that when it comes to the section on traffic, there is a statement under it that says, and I, of course, disagree with this. It says, page 18, "For this reason, lead agency finds that in the absence of a completed roadway improvements, the potential impacts cannot be adequately mitigated, and that no building permit shall be issued until the reconstruction of New York 25 and Edwards Avenue is completed by the New York DOT." Now, I could tell you, I've been doing this work for many decades now. And to say that there is no adequate means of mitigating any condition, I find, you know, simply just not an opportunity, I'm sorry, you know, not in keeping with the fact that reasonable people should be able to come to some compromise, and especially when it comes to mitigating something like this. So if I may, the reconstruction of Edwards Avenue and Middle Country Road by the New York State DOT is an absolute deal killer. To tie the project to the state DOT effectively kills the project. According to the DOT, the project has already been postponed from 2023, as Mr. Bergman has already said. Our own inquiry with the DOT confirms what Mr. Bergman had said. It's scheduled to start releasing bids in November of this year. The work is supposed to start early in 2024, and it's scheduled completion in early, I'm sorry, in spring of 2025. But this has been a problem intersection for years, and if anything, it's our hope that this project might actually spur the DOT to finally get off its ass and do what it's supposed to do, pardon the expression. But I've been working on projects in and around the Calverton area. I worked on the lumberyard down the block, my firm worked on a gas station just to the east. We know about the Charter School. But quite frankly, the problems with that intersection have been here since the intersection was poorly designed. Everybody knows that as you go through the intersection, right, there's a jog in it, it doesn't line up. And that's because there needs to be a taking on the northwest side of the intersection so that the roadway lines up more properly. The addition of turning lanes on both sides will absolutely be an improvement on this. But go back to our project, the project is completely as of right, but for two variances that have nothing to do with traffic whatsoever. It's a height variance, which we've diminished, and also the impervious surface variance, which we've also diminished. We can't go ahead with the ZBA until this board makes the finding statements. So it's also, the project's located in an opportunity zone, right? We came to the town with this project to be located in this opportunity zone because of the tremendous need that you just heard about a second ago. That was identified. The person that came up with the idea for this project was a visionary, because there is nothing like this on the east end. You've heard me say it a couple of times out here, I'm saying it just for the sake of the people that are behind me. The only similar project for contractors or for people that need this type of space is Gabreski Airport. And Gabreski was built 40 years ago. It doesn't work for today's modern standards. Simply the garage doors are not large enough to even get a vehicle inside. Contractors, manufacturers, people who, I can't think of the word, but that they put together their product inside, and then they need to load it and bring it out. You know, window people, glazers, right? I mean, there's a number of uses, cabinet makers, you know, they don't have any place to use this. This project will be at the gateway for the whole North Fork of Long Island. Some other additional things. Going back to the DOT timetable, there's no guarantee they will adhere to it, they postponed it once, they may postpone it again. It's just the nature of the beast with the DOT, right? It's a behemoth, we know that, right? But clearly, the community pressure needs to be on the DOT doing that work, not on stalling our project any further. We have been, making us wait for the DOT is unjust. Rather, we would rather instead work with you to come up with some type of traffic mitigation plan. In the event, now we hope that DOT does stick to its timetable, gets everything done, right? But in the event that the BP is ready or the CFO is ready for issuance, that the developer enters a traffic mitigation plan, which is much fairer and equitable treatment of us, especially given the fact that we have been pursuing these zoning approvals for now going on three years. We have done every single thing the town has asked us to do, every study, we've looked at it. The project has been studied inside and out. There are wide-ranging impacts by this condition. First, financing the project will be impossible without a date certain. Leasing the project will be difficult without a date certain. And finally, bidding the project for the construction work will be delayed. So, this is putting the cart before the horse, in our opinion. Why not deal with the problem if one exists? With the proposed methodology that we have, it would allow the project to go forward with flexibility. That's all we're asking for, is for this board to be a little more flexible when it comes to dealing with this. And it's only if this contingency happens. But we can't tie our project in with the DOT. So with me tonight, I have Ms. Caitlin Time. I'd like her to talk about the water supply issue that Mr. Bergman went into. And then also, if Ms. Amanda LaRosa wants to add anything additional to what I've already mentioned about the traffic impact. Thank you.
Before you start, I believe that you just stated that they agreed to this two years ago, correct?
Well, so, no, but just so to represent it that, you know, we're tying them to the DOT is, I just can't agree with it on a fundamental level. I mean, again, going back to May of 2021 with the draft environmental impact statement, which was prepared by the applicant, the statement in there that this DEIS assumes the safety enhancements at New York State Route 25 and Edwards Avenue will occur prior to the completion. There is an acknowledgement in that document that, okay, I don't want to say they tied themselves to it, but there is an acknowledgement in there, going back from the very start of this environmental review, acknowledgement that 25 and Edwards is not a properly functioning intersection, that these were considered. And again, considering potential traffic mitigation, we haven't, you know, that's not within the record. So if the board were to consider potential alternatives, that would be something that would require another supplemental EIS. So, you know, that is an option. If the board as lead agency feels that something was inadequately studied, and again, SECRE talks about new information, timing, et cetera. Again, we weren't made aware of the delay until December of 2022. So that is something that could be studied. So, you know, that...
May I, we don't want to go backwards, right? We need to go forwards with the project, right? It's absolutely critical.
We're not against your project.
No, no, I'm not suggesting you are. I'm saying, I'm trying to...
You don't have to live with that intersection.
I understand that.
These people, I do, we all do, we have to live with that. You have no idea with this.
I know that, but it's only, you know, it's not definite, it's a contingency that may or may not happen. So let's deal with it, or let's at least post, like, tonight's on for discussion. We're not, you know, there's no resolution before you. So what I'm saying is, let us work together, let's come up with a mitigation plan that we can both live with, right? Because there's a need for the project, we want to see the project go forward, we've been waiting for this project for several months now. We were delayed, we thought, we were in a position to get a finding statement, when? Back in June?
Well, no, I mean, the supplement, the resolution for the positive declaration for the supplemental was October of 2022.
Okay, so the fall, so we've literally been in holding pattern since the fall, and we did everything. We went back out, we studied everything that needed to be studied, you know? So, if we could, and I appreciate your indulgence on this, but it really is, I'm passionate about it because it's critical.
Well, we're passionate about it also, because this is our town.
I understand.
And I did, you know, as Mr. Brown pointed out, you know, there are statements in here, I mean, the needs and the benefits of the project. There's a reason why that's in there. I think it's important, you know, that the planning board's job, you know, they're not to just look at every potential negative impact, you know, SECRE looks at needs and benefits. So that's why it absolutely was important to put those needs and benefits in there, the market demand for it. I absolutely acknowledge there is space out here, and there is a need for it. There's no question about that. And again, the planning board's job is to facilitate development in a reasonable and orderly fashion. Now, I do remember when I first received this application, probably this was sometime in early to mid 2020 when it was first brought to the planning board. I remember distinctly saying, "This is the largest application that the town of Riverhead has seen, really, in reality, probably since Grumman was developed by the federal government." So, you know, we're kind of at a, obviously with the applications we're seeing, Riverhead is kind of at a point where this was the first application, but if the infrastructure is not there, again, if there's ways to address it, you know, Mr. Brown said potentially, you know, dealing with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. You know, when you play these things out to the logical conclusion, the issuance of a building permit in relation to the site plan application, I think that's really the last discretionary act, you know? When you get to the point of the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, if a site has passed all their building inspections, their fire marshal inspections, health department inspections, DOT... If they've sort of addressed all those issues and they've passed all that, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy is really almost an administrative function. That's not an action by the planning board that the planning board really would have any discretion over. So, you know, what I fear, and I understand the applicant's desire to get this project going, I absolutely understand that and I respect that. But if we play this out, if there is an issuance of a building permit, we could potentially be faced in a situation where if there's further delays by the DOT, now the applicant's expended tens of millions of dollars to develop a site, could potentially be occupancy-ready, but still be faced with sort of a logjam at the end, be it 12 months, 18 months down the road, where if that intersection still isn't done, now we're going to try to scramble to figure out how to fix that when we knew it was an issue at this point.
So, something critical you need to understand, and that the audience needs to understand. A shovel's not going to go in this project tomorrow. There's still an extensive part of the process that still has to take place, that's going to take many months, even maybe a year. So this is still, it's an important hook that we have to jump through, but we still have preliminary site plan approval, we still have a SWIP that needs to be approved, and you're going to have an opportunity to final site plan approval. So there still is plenty of time. We hope that the DOT gets this act together. I suggest that we all collectively push the DOT to finally make those improvements. I know I will be. But the fact is, you know, there's still plenty of time to get that done. And if we come up with an accommodation, I think we can, we worked very well together in the past. I know we could do it and come up with something that says that. Okay, if the contingency arises, then we do X. But to just say all out, you can tie me to the New York State DOT, oh, vague. I don't want to be tied to the DOT for anything.
Is there a way to put a timing on this to say that if the DOT does not act by a certain time? No?
I mean, again, so that's a very tough spot to be in on our part, you know, like, the end of the SECRE process is the issuance of a finding statement. And that finding statement's going to contain whatever it's going to contain. So to go, you know, to make a finding statement with that unknown variant, it's just...
I understand.
We are both, both the applicant and the planning board, I understand, it's a difficult question. It's a rock and a hard place, preferably. But again, this is a large application, the largest application we've seen. Riverhead's growing up.
Sorry, I'm going to try to simplify it. So what we're suggesting, what we're, think that a good accommodation would be, would be to say that if the building permit is ready for issuance, right, and the DOT is not done with their reconstruction, that we submit a mitigation plan subject to your review and approval. So this way, the trucks would have a detour, they'd have to go find a different route in order to get there.
And what route would that be?
It would not be that intersection, it would have to be dispersed.
Well, as this is just a discussion for now, I'll take in everything that you've had to say. I know that you would like to say something.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. So as a secret consultant to H.B. Ventures LLC, P.W. Grocer Consulting...
Just be up in the...
Here's the microphone, yeah.
Okay, so as a secret consultant to H.B. Ventures LLC, P.W. Grocer Consulting, we have prepared the draft environmental impact statement, the final environmental impact statement, the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, and the final supplemental environmental impact statement, which have all been prepared at the direction of and coordination with the town planning staff. Regarding the groundwater, as indicated in our March 23, 2023 memorandum, we are requesting the modification of the condition to install two additional mine-to-wells on site. I do want to thank Greg for noting that he has no objection to option one, and that we can further explore option two as needed. With regard to traffic, the draft finding statement includes a condition of approval that the building permit will not be issued until the DOT completes the intersection improvements at State Route 25 and Edwards Avenue intersection. However, this condition is not supported by the SECRE public record. The final environmental impact statement was filed by the applicant and accepted by the planning board without any requests for revisions on August 18, 2022. It must be further noted that on August 1, 2022, the planning department's staff report on the final environmental impact statement concludes that neither Phase One nor Phase Two of the H.B. Ventures project would have a significant impact on the adjacent roadway network and recommends acceptance of the final environmental impact statement without any revisions. After the acceptance of the final environmental impact statement, the applicant was directed to prepare the draft supplemental environmental impact statement to evaluate the cumulative effects on the intersection with other pending applications. The draft supplemental environmental impact statement was filed with the town on November 21, 2022, and was accepted as complete on December 1, 2022. It is noted that the resolution accepting the draft supplemental environmental impact statement acknowledges that the traffic consultant reviewed the draft supplemental environmental impact statement, and no comments were offered. On January 23, 2023, this was after the planning staff was aware of DOT's delays in intersection improvements, the town issued a resolution directing the preparation of a final supplemental environmental impact statement to address public comments of Barbara Blas and the Greater Calverton Civic Association, as well as, quote, "the written response from L.K. McLean dated January 2023," end quote, "to include, quote, 'by reference the New York State Department of Transportation, Transportation Project Report Final Design Report dated July 2022, pin 0810.1,'" end quote, "and to include the 143 truck loading bays for the Riverhead Logistics Center project, as well as correcting language for the proposed solar program.'" As the SECRE public record does not support this condition of approval and did not give the applicant the opportunity to address, it is not appropriate. and did not give the applicant the opportunity to address, it is not appropriate.
So I mean, if I, if I could just, so I, I don't want to jump over Caitlin, I apologize, but the, the reference to the August 1st, 2022 memo, so I did basically excerpt sections from that TIS that were right out of that TIS, but what I will note is that the final environmental impact statement did say that the report notes that the Edwards Avenue-Middle Country Road intersection is expected to undergo major redesign to add turn signals at all approaches, which will further help to mitigate any increase in delays resulting from the proposed development. My staff report goes on to further say, per the New York State DOT, the estimated time of completion for the Edwards Avenue-Middle Country Road improvements is sometime in 2023. I will also note the February 22, uh, February 2022 TIS from Stonefield does say that, however, it is important to note that per consultation with New York State DOT, the subject intersection will undergo roadway improvements which may proactively mitigate any increases in delay which are calculated within the analysis. So I, I don't want to keep harping on this, I understand everyone's position, and yet this is for discussion purposes, but this intersection, the 25 Edwards Avenue reconstruction, it's always kind of been that voice in the back of your head. It hasn't always been loud on the initial, when we understood that it was going to be completed in 2023, but that little voice has always been there. It's just that now that we know that there's a significant delay in that project, now that voice is starting to get louder, and now it's kind of hard to ignore that voice. But that reconstruction of that 25 Edwards Avenue intersection, it's peppered throughout the SEACRA documents and the record. It, it's, it's there, black and white, it's there and it's always been there, and we know it. And I, I understand the applicant's position, again, I understand the planning board's position. So I know we do have Ray DeBias here, he was, he is from LK McLean. He is here, I just, and if there's going to be heavy traffic discussion, which we are in right now, I would see if maybe Ray would want to come up.
I would love to have Ray come up.
If the board has any questions, I mean, again, I'm not opposed to exploring some alternatives or ways to mitigate it, because ultimately, we want the same things, we want the project, we, we want reasonable development, but we cannot have, we cannot have development at the expense of infrastructure or the residents. So do have Ray DeBias from LK McLean.
Good evening, board members, and actually, I appeared before most of you, I think it was at the beginning of the initial kickoff of the Riverhead Comprehensive Plan. We're actually part of the reincarnation of that plan, so we'll be, we'll be coming back to you again. Just a little about myself, I'm a professional engineer. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer and a certified professional transportation planner. I've been a traffic engineer for over four decades. Since, or since the last 30-plus years, I've been reviewing traffic impact studies on behalf of multiple municipalities on Long Island, including Riverhead, also Southampton, East Hampton, Town of Brookhaven, Oyster Bay Town as well, and Islip Town as well. I've reviewed probably over 100 traffic impact studies for compliance with SEACRA, and I've testified at public hearings and public meetings, and, and in court on projects regarding SEACRA compliance of traffic impact studies. So I conducted an initial review, I, I'd like to focus really on the DOT, the DOT project. Couple of things on that, we had made initial comments that, you know, we were on the, on the understanding the applicant would wait for the DOT project, because the DOT project, as you know, makes significant improvements, and the improvements include left turn lanes on all approaches to the intersections, which requires widening of the roadway and property acquisition as well. And more importantly, or just as important, is the alignment of the north and south approaches of Edwards Avenue. When you try to make a left turn at that intersection, I'm sure you're familiar with it, you have to wait, if you're going north and you want to turn west on, on Route 25, you have to wait because someone in front of you is making a left turn, people are trying to get around that person, you can't tell if someone at the last moment's going to come around that car, so you wait. The analysis that's done, the capacity analysis of the intersection where you get the level of service, doesn't really take that into account. But to backtrack a bit, we responded in a memo, March 31st, to the planning department, and by the way, Greg did a very good summary of, of the situation with respect to capacity and DOT's project as well. So we were responding to a letter from Stonefield, which was March 15th of this year, and we had asked in previous comments that, noting the discrepancy between the level of service computations at the intersection between the applicant's study and DOT's study, which was done by a traffic engineer, also on Long Island, with a long reputation for traffic engineering. Brendan Peterson in Babylon did the study for the DOT project, which was reviewed by DOT and made part of the, of that project. The need for that project was clear, because there's existing problems at the intersection, there's existing capacity problems. So when you do the level of, or when you do the capacity analysis, or how much traffic the intersection can accommodate, you, you look at level of service. Simply put, level of service is like a report card, A through F, so it's similar report card you would get in school, I always use that analogy, A being excellent, B being very good, C being satisfactory, D being the minimum passing grade you'd expect to have, and that's typically used at intersections on Long Island during peak hours. If, if there's a design going through, and the state looks 20 years out in the future, which is what they do, and they add traffic growth in, they look at a level of service D as being acceptable in that time period for a short period of time, say during the peak hour. Level of service also has a level called E, which is where the intersection meets the capacity, and things start to back up. F is failure, where there's delays on all approaches to the intersection typically. You know that the intersection does not operate properly, that there's delays. Just coming out here tonight, I need one trip, I'm coming up Edwards Avenue northbound, making a right on 25, and I'm backed up almost to the south end of the FedEx building, so that's a significant queue. I did not get through the first green signal, which kind of indicates on that level of service E or F for that approach. This is one random trip, and I don't even know if we were in the, the peak hour for the intersection, it was 5:30 on the way here tonight. So what I had pointed out in my comments of March 31st was that there is this discrepancy between Stonefield's calculations of, of capacity of the intersection and level of service and DOT, and we had asked for a reconciliation of that, like, please address this, it, it can't be both, it has to be one or the other, and it seems like, from traveling through the intersection, that it's, it's the levels that DOT talks about. So just a refreshing memory, Stonefield calculated overall level of service B during the weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday peak hours. This is during, this is existing conditions at the intersection. So the turning movements at, at the intersection are calculated, operate at an acceptable level of service C or better during the study period, peak hours. DOT, on the other hand, calculated existing level of service, existing levels of service as D, C, and D compared to the B in all time periods for Stonefield. And the critical intersection movements at the, that DOT calculated were E or F during those time periods. So Stonefield's response on the, in the March 15th letter that was submitted by, by, by the attorney talk about the different methods, the different software models that are used to, to determine capacity analysis, and there are differences between the way they work. So everything now is you plug the volumes into a computer program, you have the right inputs, you check them, you make sure they're right, and you get levels of service on all approaches, and you also get something called a volume-to-capacity ratio, which is another way of looking at, at intersection capacity. So their existing conditions results were the ones I just talked about. In their response, they quoted DOT's document in their highway design manual, which talks about that. There are differences, and there are different models. They omitted a section in the DOT document that talks about calibration of the model. So when you determine, let's say I'm going in the future, I, I'm building a project, I want to go out 20 years, I'm guessing at traffic growth that the numbers I have are going to be right, I'm guessing at other developments, and the determination of the level of service I make is, is, is a prediction, the future. In this case, we're looking at existing conditions. So DOT has a section in there called calibration, Stonefield's response, they skipped over the calibration section. Calibration says, section says, if you have the way of taking the results that you get and going out into field and checking to make sure they're right, you need to do that, and that's part of DOT's procedure. So we were saying, go out and check them, go out, and when I say check them, you look at the lengths of traffic that's backed up, queue lengths on each approach, and you look at what level of service that is, and then you compare it to what you got, you should be close. So this has not been done, it should be done, and just making an educated guess as to what's out there right now and, and experiences that we've seen, both in the comprehensive plan, where we looked at this intersection instead of needing to be rebuilt, and also just driving through the intersection at random time periods, I would suspect that DOT's results are the accurate ones. So Stonefield needs to at least go through the exercise of doing this and measuring in the field, in accordance with the DOT procedures, what the queue lengths are of, of the vehicles on, when the signal turns red during the peak hours. I will say too, that the other, the other easy to remember type of slogan or, or rule that you should remember is, an applicant or is responsible to mitigate the traffic that they generate, just that amount of traffic that they generate. So when we have the existing levels of service quantified, then the applicant needs to add on their traffic and add on the growth factor and add, until the project is built. I would suspect that it's going to, based on field conditions and observed conditions, that, that both we know and you know from driving through it, I would think that the DOT's results are going to be found to be closer to what's actually out there, which is the reason why the DOT is, is proposing to do the project. Now, the, having, having the applicant not wait for DOT and having them say, well, what can we do to, you know, work around this situation, what if the DOT project gets, gets delayed? Well, the applicant's additional traffic is probably going to result in the same improvements that DOT is contemplating. So you would say, if there's available property, you should pay for the widening of the road and implement the improvements, if you don't want to wait for DOT to do it. But clearly, DOT knows this is a problem, because they programmed this intersection. As far as contacting DOT and trying to make sure the project happens, one thing that can be done is to contact DOT now, before the plans are put out. This project includes three different intersections in three locations that aren't even close to each other, the critical intersections, one of them is out in South Hol Town, and I believe there's one in East Hampton, I believe, 114 at Montalk Highway. These are widely separated. DOT, DOT could put in their contract plans, when construction starts, the contractor shall work and complete, or have substantial completion of the improvements at one intersection first, it could be this intersection. So that should be done now, I mean, it's, and it's clear that this project needs it, and it's clear that the intersection needs improvement. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
If I may, I don't think anybody's disputing, especially the conclusion that Mr. DeBias just said. What we're talking about is dealing with a contingency, whether or not it happens, I go back to that. So if I may, I could ask Mr. Amanda LaRosa to opine on, on some of the things that, that Mr. DeBias said just for the, the purpose of the record, which I think I need to do, so if we could do that now. But, you know, I will say this, just the only thing I heard that Mr. DeBias said, which I would take issue with, is when it comes to level of service, it is not analogous to a report card. It, the level of service is all about the timing in which a motorist takes to go through an intersection. So I don't want anybody to think that because it's an F, it's completely failed, that there's something completely messed up, it, it has to, equates directly to the timing in which a motorist goes through there. So with that, I'd like to have Ms. LaRosa talk. Amanda, you there?
Hi, hi, everyone, I'm here, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, for the record, Amanda LaRosa, Stonefield Engineering, office at 584 Broadway, Suite 310, New York, New York. As was mentioned, I am the traffic consultant on this application, we've been working on this application for many years. We have consulted very closely with both planning staff and the traffic engineer, as you've heard significantly. I don't actually have objection to anything that Mr. DeBias has put in front of you tonight, this is more of a procedural issue where we weren't given an opportunity to respond to concerns. In fact, the August 1st memo, as was mentioned a few times, recommended adopting the reports that we had prepared with no further comments.
Amanda, anything, anything with respect to the calibration that Mr. DeBias talked about?
Yeah, so the first time we were actually asked to look at the, compare basically our results to the results from the DOTs was when we actually got our hands on the finding statements that we're here discussing tonight. Before that, all of our conversations were about making sure that we had the right geometric configuration. Early on in the process, the DOT project was not even yet announced. I know Mr. DeBias had an inside scoop, he was very accommodating early on and giving us the right information to add to our models as far as the lane configurations that the DOT was considering for this improvement. So there, there was constant communication along the way. We were under the impression that everything that we had prepared was satisfactory, as was indicated in all the staff memos along the way.
Yeah, and with respect to the July 19th memo, we never received a copy of that memo from planning staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the first time we learned about the, the report was this week, correct?
Yes, the first time we saw it was the, the mention of it in the March 31st letter.
And notwithstanding that, there was findings, and I guess this is a question for Ms. Game, the, the results of the DEIS and the FEIS was that there was no, notwithstanding that memo, that there was no significant environmental impact going to be created by this project, correct?
Yes, correct.
And the only other thing I just want to make sure the record is clear about is, there is a comment with regard to the infrastructure improvements as detailed in the Riverhead Water District map and plan report that are provided by the applicant. So we recently met with the Riverhead Water District, and I just, in terms of the finding statement, talks about the payment of $2.6 million, it's our understanding in talking with them that that number may be considerably less, based on the, the new plan that, that the Riverhead Water District is putting in place, and then, and then there's another paragraph that talks about metering services of the property in line with the development of $111,000. So rather than referring to those amounts, I would like to just amend the finding statements, or ask you to, that is, to amend the finding statements, so that, that number, which is very much in flux right now, is not a fixed number, if we say approximately or something along those lines.
Estimated, so I, I have had conversations with Anne Marie Prudential, Deputy Town Attorney, and Frank Mancini of the Riverhead Water District Superintendent. I would have no objection to taking language from them, again, not saying that X amount of dollars is written in stone, and basically at the, whatever is required by the Riverhead Water District.
I, I think that would be more appropriate.
That's, that's appropriate. Again, I do want to state, you know, again, the, in July of 2022, while we were all operating, and both the-
and both the applicant, as well as us, design professionals, consultants, we were all operating with the understanding, 25 and Edwards was going to be completed sometime in 2023 to coincide with the project. There is also a difference between accepting an environmental impact statement and making a finding. The finding is the result of, you know, if I, if I brought in the, the EISs, it would probably be a stack of binders this high. There is a significant difference in accepting those versus trying to distill them down to a 24-page finding statement. The finding statement is the culmination of the result. The environmental impact statement is not the findings on the project.
So just for the record, what would your objection be to a supplemental?
We already did one supplemental. We do, we're not want to go backwards. We, we have reached a point where we're asking for this condition to be modified so that there's a contingency put in place, rather than assuming that it, it won't happen, and rather, I would ask the town, through your devices, the planning staff, to appeal to the town attorney's office to write a letter to the DOT and do, and do what Mr. DeBais suggested, which is prioritizing this intersection above the other two projects that are slated for the east end of Long Island. I think that's extremely important, given what we've learned.
Very well.
Okay.
Joe, do you want to say anything? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Mr. DeBais, thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Do you get a chance to say anything?
Joe, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, what, the one that's on phase?
I would like to, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I gather that there will be some more discussions later on about everything that was brought up.
Yes, we're not, we're not, we're not issuing a finding statement, there will be further discussions.
Okay, okay. I would like to be applauded there.
Yes, you do.
I would hope you are.
Don't worry. The show's not going on without you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, let's move on to the public comments on the resolutions. If anyone would like to come up that has anything to comment about the resolutions only at this point, please come up.
Steve Geske, I live in Timber Park, Penny Drive. I can see this project from my bedroom window upstairs. I look out across Milosek's, across the farm. I can see tractor supply when the trees aren't in bloom.
No, right now we're doing public comments on the resolutions. When we're finished with the resolutions, you'll be able to come up at this time. I'm sorry. Okay, we can go on with the resolutions.
Okay, I'll move resolution number 24, Riverhead Hyundai facade improvements and additions, so moved.
Second.
Nenaro?
Aye.
O'Day?
Aye.
Darseski?
Waske?
Yes.
Resolution 025, Riverhead Hyundai facade improvements and additions. Schedule a public hearing for site plan application, which promises facade improvements and additions to an existing 14,000 square foot called the Ocean.
Second motion.
Vote please, Nenaro?
Aye.
O'Day?
Yes.
Darseski?
Waske?
Yes.
I'll move resolution 26, Federica Miles granting a 90-day extension of the approval to the, allow the applicant to attain, excuse me, an SCDHS approval for a minus subdivision, so moved.
Second motion.
Vote please, Nenaro?
Aye.
O'Day?
Yes.
Darseski?
Aye.
Waske? Yes.
So, so board, if I could just, the next two, numbers four and five, the resolution number 2023-20 for 84 Chrome Avenue, we are going to keep that table. We're going to bring that up at the next planning board meeting on the 20th, when the applicant's representative can be here. Regarding number five on the agenda, resolution number 2023-22, what I had sent out to the board and I printed out a packet of it, was for the Long Island Cauliflower Association. This was tabled from the last board meeting. There were some concerns that I had raised, there were some discussions that were had with Vinnie Guardiello, the towns consulting engineer, deputy town attorney, Amory Prudenti, Mike Seleski, the highway superintendent, and myself. So I did, Vinnie Guardiello did a pair of memo dated March 31st, so there were four comments in that memo. What I would ask the board is to untable the resolution, amend, make amendment to the resolution to incorporate Vinnie Guardiello's March 31st memo as a whereas in the resolution, and then include a condition that prior to final site plan approval, his March 31st memo comments will be addressed. And the, the nature of the comments really had to do with internal directional signage throughout the site, kind of like wayfinding signs, similar to what you see in Tanger when you're driving up Tanger Drive and you see this way to New York 25, this way to the LIE. There was an opportunity to incorporate some wayfinding sign within that, within the development to direct people heading west or east on 58. And there were questions just about the signalization of that intersection at the Mill Road and Home Depot intersection. So that intersection will undergo some improvements. They're going to add a left turn lane northbound into the site. So there were just comments regarding that. So I would just ask the board to untable that resolution, amend it to incorporate Vinnie Guardiello's comments as a whereas, incorporate a condition into the resolve that prior to final site plan approval, his March 31st memo shall be addressed.
Do you want to do that?
I'll make a motion to take resolution number 22 off the table.
I'll second.
Vote please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a resolution, a motion to move resolution 22 as amended, as per Greg, so moved.
By Vinnie Guardiello's comments of March 31st?
Correct, included as both a whereas by reference, and then as a condition to be satisfied prior to final site plan approval.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, if we have any public comments on all matters, you can come up. Greg, thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Can I give you the heat maps? I was told the IT person was not here.
I didn't.
So I printed out maps for everybody. I printed out a large. Thank you.
We have one Friday.
I'd like you to look carefully at that map. It's the HK Planning Development. I made the map so I could understand what was around this development. HK Ventures warehouse proposal is a huge development. It's 400,000 square feet, replacing 30 acres of wooded and open land. The board's finding statement says that the proposed development will not have a significant negative impact on the aesthetic resources or community character. I disagree with this statement. This warehouse does not belong in a rural and agricultural neighborhood. The land directly across the street is zoned rural corridor. On the north side of Middle Country Road, the land is zoned agricultural protection. With these surroundings, a warehouse of any kind is inappropriate. The finding statement refers to other industrial developments to justify this location. The tractor supply company next to the site is currently 19,000 square feet, but has been approved to expand for a total of roughly 32,000 square feet. Even at this expanded size, the proposed warehouse development will dwarf the tractor supply company. This large expanse of warehouse buildings is at odds with the agricultural context, and no amount of trees will hide this development. The traffic impact statement concluded that a traffic light is needed at Middle Country Road and at the entrance of the property. That there is even a need for a traffic light says a lot about the volume of traffic that will be generated by this development, along with several other industrial developments in the area. If a traffic light is even warranted, it would be better placed at Fresh Pond Avenue. This development belongs in Epcal, where there is an existing industrial hub that is buffered by land and forest. The planning board is failing the community by not protecting open spaces and by not directing industrial developments to Epcal. Thank you.
Steve Geske, Timber Park. Those are my neighbors. Pretty much what they said, I agree with everything. I was beginning to say before, I'm going to see this from my back of my home, looking out on the second floor, over the farm, Milosek's Farm. There are certain times of day I won't take Middle Country Road, even tonight, coming here. I said, you know what, I'll take Sound Avenue. It's out of my way. I took Fresh Pond North, took Sound Avenue, went the whole back way. You know, minutes of difference in travel time. But there's weekends during the year already that we know that we can't travel. You got to go shop at a certain time, get home at a certain time. We have to consider the wide cumulative effect of all these giant projects that are looming on top of us possibly. It's a nightmare. I moved here only a few years ago, I'm already considering actively, do I want to still live here? I don't know. I'm terrified of what could happen. An airport, I know that's another topic for, you know, another night perhaps, but everything seems to fit together. There's pieces, and it's starting to materialize now to something that could be horrible. This is not why I moved out here and why people spent their lives here and have invested so much time in raising families out this place. I'm going to borrow from a neighbor of mine, a few months back said, consider the picture here. Imagine that picture right now, on there, a giant cube, or what they call these logistics centers, you know, 50 feet tall. This is not what we want to see. If we do allow these things to be built, industrial parks, like you would see in Asser Avenue in Hopg, or off of Veterans Highway over in Holbrook, by the airport, McArthur Airport, you're going to have to amend this over here. And you have to paint on there, the real representation of what the area's going to look like. We don't want it to look like that. That's why people came out here and stayed out here. So first, I guess last, I'll close and say, thank you so much for your patience in hearing everybody tonight, and I see your concern about the traffic. That intersection is a nightmare, and I hope you stand and stay with what was agreed upon originally, that we can't do anything with this HK project until at least New York State DOT moves in and says, we're going to fix this intersection, if there's such a fix. But, thank you folks, have a great night. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
John Cullen from Northville again. In real terms, I think I'm the last person in life to get a smartphone because it was given to me by my nephew. And as this meeting was going on, I took a little peek at that video that was all circulated amongst everybody about the cider house and the wedding. And what you'll see is that that wedding started at night. You'll see cars driving by with their headlights on, and the people walking in in the very beginning, it's pitch blackout. I heard the law, the attorney for John King say that everything closes at 7:00 PM. That would be the fastest wedding I've ever seen in my life, and I've been to a bunch. They're nevertheless at three hours. On another note, and as I played that, all of a sudden, it went into another video of the tour of the cider house. And it's as is right now with the new room in the back, and everything that has it is today. And I noticed that there were garage doors from the back room where the wedding dining area is, in the back room, the brand new room back there, and that there are garage doors that go out to the patio to a fire pit in that area. So I just, if you have the time to take a peek at it, I'd appreciate it. But they, they said it closes at 7:00, that was certainly not 7 o'clock. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The only concern I have with the lavender is the traffic as you're heading west to east, you have to make a left turn against the traffic. And I know in the summertime, we watched the cars piled up, because right in front of our house, going into splish splash. And I know sometimes they have the police directing traffic at the traffic lane, sometimes the staff actually directs the traffic for splish splash out and in. So again, like I said, the only concern I would have regarding the entranceway, because they do have an entranceway already on Matty Road, right over there. I'd be concerned about the traffic going, making a left turn as you're going from west to east. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Danielle Kilfoyle, I live in Calverton. I just have a few comments in response to the March 16th discussion of North Point Riverhead Logistics Sound Study. I really appreciated the board's questions and comments in the meeting. I feel like you really captured some of the concerns that us community members have about this facility, most specifically as it pertains to the sound study. I do have a few other comments on this. There's been a lot of discussion on the traffic data codes being used for North Point's traffic projections. And it's so important that the traffic data used reflects the true potential traffic output of this facility, the facility of this square footage, this usage, which is a high cube distribution center, not a traditional warehouse. This traffic data really impacts all areas of the environmental impact study, most specifically the sound study. The applicant's site plan that they submitted with their application shows 448 parking spaces, and a majority of the tractor trailer loading bays are on the side of the property that borders APZ. The beeping from the trucks that are going to be backing up and idling in, in this facility is going to be staggering, and that beeping is meant to be heard. That sound cuts through all other ambient noise, you know, by function. So 1,000 tractor trailers per day backing up with that beeping sounds a lot different than 20 tractor trailers per day. So using the correct traffic data projections is critical to our understanding of this facility's true impact, most specifically its true sound impact. And in addition, it, from that discussion, it sort of appeared to me that the applicant seems to be focusing a lot of their sound data collections to the louder areas of the property, the areas near Suffolk Cement and on the side of the property that's closer to 58, which will make it seem like the area's a lot louder than it really is, and hence lessen the mitigation measures that would have to be taken. And I also wanted to note that the sound data currently being collected from that property is being taken from a fully wooded property with mature pine and oak forest. Should this facility be constructed, the site will be fully cleared. And according to the site plans submitted with the application, not one tree planted at the time of construction will be over six feet tall. So you're taking a roughly 40-acre habitat that provides sound buffering to this APZ section, removing it and then introducing more sound, and I don't know if that sound study is capturing that. And I, I can't speak for everyone, but to me, it really feels like all of Riverhead is upset about the looming threat of North Point. And we really appreciate you looking out for us throughout this process and hope that our concern has impact. Thank you.
There are a lot of issues that were raised with respect to zoning and, okay, thanks. It really underscores the need for everybody to participate in the comprehensive plan update process, because when you're talking about zoning and maybe what might be inappropriate uses in particular areas, and you would prefer to see other things, that's, that's really the forum, and that's where you really need to make your, your vision known to the decision makers. And Greg, that was an incredible finding statement, I just have to say, I really commend you on that. That was.
For Greg, for Greg.
I don't think I've ever read a finding statement quite like that, and I, I'm glad you stood your ground because it was rooted in, in a lot of facts that. ground because it was rooted in a lot of facts that were disseminated over the course of the entire environmental review. So, but I did want to bring something to your attention, and you may or may not be aware of it, but you know, the town board passed unanimously legislation to, or local law to provide for battery energy storage in five zoning use districts in Riverhead, the industrial A, industrial C, residents A80, and the APZ. So battery energy storage is now permitted in those districts. And there are, you know, performance standards and there are criteria. But the reason I bring it up is that just today, the town of Southampton had a work session. And at the work session, the council for the planning board and the planning director appealed to the Southampton Town Board, who adopted their best legislation, similar to ours, it's different zoning use districts, but on the model that NYSRDA provided for all municipalities. They adopted theirs two years ago, and they were before the work, the Southampton Town Board today asking for a moratorium on battery energy storage systems. And the request came from the planning board because they said, we are actually not prepared. We don't understand it enough to ask the appropriate questions, and you're going to be the board responsible, as in Southampton, for approving site plans. And they are asking the town board, please take a three-six-month pause, as they called it, but it is a moratorium, so that we could, we, meaning the planning board, could become educated on it and include more input from the fire districts and others that they felt perhaps now that they're seeing applications, they realize that some tweaking of the local law needs to be done, and the people really need to be brought up to speed. And I know there's going to be a presentation by.
BFJ.
Thank you. BFJ on, that will include, thanks. But I'm not so sure that that's going to be the kind of education that is going to be sufficient. And I'm not saying that you all are not educated on it, but I'm just saying this is a law that has existed for two years already in Southampton, and now they are asking their town board to take that time out so that they could become, I don't know how much they, our town board contacted you with respect to that local law? No, you're shaking your head? No, as though you did not?
Mark, we have a workshop coming up discussing battery storage for us.
And that's what I'm saying. And it's really important that, and I'm not sure if a day workshop is sufficient, and I hope you have the enough information even ahead of time to review so that you can ask the appropriate questions. But, you know, I know for a fact even our water district superintendent was not consulted in that local law. And one of the main issues that was revealed by the public or concerned of the public and acknowledged by BFJ was, you know, the groundwater, special groundwater protection areas and potential contamination. And it just seems as though this local law, as well put together as it was, Matt, that was, you know, I know you did your homework on that for sure, but it really should have been, in my opinion, and its only opinion, a much more inclusive process because now we're seeing that maybe it's not exactly as easily digested when it gets to the point of a site plan application.
Sounds like another thing that probably should have been included in the new master plan, I suspect.
Many people have said that over and over, and it was, we all felt that it was very inappropriate to take it out of that context because the original comp plan actually cited not only additional study for solar, but for battery energy. It was in the original contact, contract. And why they took it out of sequence, your guess is as good as mine. We keep saying, you know, there's something's driving that train, but we don't know what it is. But I just caution you only because your colleagues in Southampton had two years' worth of information, and they're still at the point now where they need a little more time to further get digested all. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
I just want to bring up, since you just offered an excellent segue for me, which I was going to bring this up at the end of the meeting, you brought up that we do have BFJ coming here, what is that, the May 6th meeting to address us, to let us ask questions. And we have offered that if anyone would like to write in some questions for that meeting, we would be happy to ask some of those questions on everyone's behalf. And also, with regard to the Riverhead Comprehensive Plan Update on April 22nd, which is a Saturday morning, BFJ will be here along with the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee from 10:00 AM to noon at the Sepic Theater. And everyone is welcome to attend. We encourage you to attend so that collectively, all of us together can learn.
Sure.
Is that my cue that I'm done? So, come on out and join us that day. We, you know, this is the time that we need to hear from all the Barbara Blasses out there that, you know, have. Well, there is only one. I'm sorry. Nobody can compare to Barbara.
But if you are looking for questions, I'd be more than happy to forward to you the nine questions that I asked, that I've written to the NYSRDA individual that came down, and the seven pages of questions that I submitted to be responded to by BFJ. Maybe you'll get a, you'll have more luck at getting responses than I did, but I'd be happy to forward to you.
I can promise to ask all of them, but I will randomly select through it.
May I highlight those that were really more? Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Barbara. Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, Tuckee Church and Greater Calverton Civic again. Such good speakers tonight, and such good explanations for HK Ventures. Thank you again. So about education, I have a flyer here that I have for each one of you, questions on what the new warehouse breeds look like and what they're composed of and what their land use codes are. We're, Calverton Civic is hosting an informational meeting. It has, it was originally a different date, and then the school had a conflict, so we had to change it to Friday, April 28th in the evening, 6 o'clock, sorry, 6:30, for an hour. This will be also available by Zoom, and we're, I'm actually going to hand these out to each of you.
Thank you.
Can you email this to us?
And I have one in there for you also, Eileen. All are welcome. We'd like to see the planning board in attendance if you can be there, to be like us, to learn and listen.
Oh, you did?
And we will have some written questions that'll be sent in. So it's an educational moment. It's not a speak your mind because you're upset moment. And we're also offering that the town board and zoning board of appeal members as well will be invited, contemplating the IDA, and I'd love it if they came. That's the last bit of government entities we're inviting. And this is actually not just for folks in Calverton, although you're going to see a very large Calverton turnout. It is for people across Riverhead who are concerned. So if you're not able to be there in person, certainly use Zoom. If you respond with your email to our civic email on the flyer, make sure that a link gets sent to you for Zoom. Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have, can I make, or can I get a motion for the minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion for the minutes of.
Mark, second.
Mark, second. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Joe. I thought you had your jammies on. Our next meeting will be Thursday, April 20th, 2023, at 3:00 PM. Everyone have a very happy Easter and Passover.
Did I just say happy Easter to everyone?
Yes.
After a couple of weeks.
Same to you, Joe.
Do everybody a happy Easter.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Happy Easter, everybody.